Okay, this is the Wasika School Board Work Session for Thursday, March 7th, 2024. It's 5:30 and we are in the central building, second floor conference room. And for our work session tonight, we have three items. First item, well, I'll turn it over to Dr. Hudson.
Certainly. Well, thank you. So tonight, we're going to have three items to talk through as we normally would during the work session, some informal items to talk through to make sure we're all learning about what's happening in our community, but also within our district and kind of see what our district's role in some of these things are. But to start off with, we have a staff spotlight tonight. We've had the opportunity in the past to talk with our technology instruction coordinators in our buildings, but tonight we have Brian Herring with us tonight to share about the technology department as a whole from systemic support of our district. And, you know, we often talk about the fact that the purpose of technology is to support instruction. It's not technology for instruction for technology's sake. It's about what can we do more effectively and efficiently based on our strategic priorities with technology. And Brian really does a fantastic job of supporting the district, leading the district down this path, looking at what's coming down the pike and keeping us, you know, not only in compliance as a base level, but also innovative in what we do as well. So Brian is going to share with us a little bit tonight about what his department does and how that impacts the district. And we have an opportunity to spotlight him tonight.
Thank you. So a few of the key things I want to talk about, one of the first thing is going to be security. And so with security, in the last couple of years, it's been a very important thing because there's just been so many different sort of attacks on various levels. And so we've been really watching what's been happening and learning from the various conferences that we've been going to and taking a look at those aspects. And so what we've been doing is prioritizing which pieces of security are most important for us to do. And then we've been very carefully, transparently trying to apply the security measures into our system after we prioritize them and try to make sure that they were and had no impact to the end users or to education as much as possible. However, one of the key things that we had to put in place, and maybe it happened to some of you, the multi-factor authentication, we did need help from the end users. But I think if they look back now after they've done it for a couple of months, they hardly notice or remember having to do that. But that was a pretty key accomplishment of what we had to go through there. Another big element that we're working on is the whole software aspect. Brooke McGuire, and she helped develop a software request process and software review process. And in that, we then go through and we're making sure and vetting together both curriculum and myself and technology to make sure that the software that we're purchasing and renewing has got, abides by the state laws, the federal laws, and has quality secure and is cloud-based. And we also make sure that it's as comprehensive as possible, trying to remove the duplicative software and the smaller pieces of software that people are using on the internet. So rather than a shallow little pieces, we're trying to get software that's all inclusive and more encompassing and more meets the needs and the standards and those sort of things. And speaking of cloud-based, we're also looking at doing the migration from Windows with the traditional Windows legacy type and then file system to more of a cloud-based system with Chromebooks. And Google has created an incredible offering for schools with the needs of K-12 in mind. Google has made a powerful, secure, customizable, and affordable platform. It's been really wonderful to work with them in the school environment. I'm happy to say that we've got a one-to-one program for our K-12. So every student has got a Chromebook and we are on a five-year rotation. That's a lot better than what we used to do with the computer labs. We used to have labs in various locations that were hardened and then mobile labs. And so the students and the teachers would have to check out the labs and then they would have to work on their projects while they were in the lab. And so that became a little bit clumsy because I could only work on my project while I was in, 40 minutes while I was in front of that computer in that lab. After that, at home or in a study hall, I couldn't do anything. But now with the one-to-one and that we're in the cloud, it's really became, it provided a lot of benefits. So the kids really have a potential for little access to work on their daily work and check out what's coming up, work on worksheets, have access to the textbooks and other supplemental materials at any time they want, whether it be in study hall, before school, after school, on weekends, right at their fingertips. And with the cloud-based computing, we also have an opportunity for immediate feedback for the kids. So when they're doing work, it can actually give you feedback on whether you were right or wrong. And so you actually are learning as you're going through worksheets or quizzes or tests and things like that. And the one-to-ones created an equitable environment. And we took it one step further. We actually are providing those students that don't have internet access at home, the opportunity for a hotspot. So we manage all of those things to make sure that everybody's got what they needed to do. But the cloud-based learning with the Chromebooks also gives an opportunity for individualized instruction, especially based on the software that we're picking out. So that if you have a 504 plan, we can do a little bit more scaled back sort of lessons. And then those that even want more to learn a little bit more, the teacher can actually assign additional material for those kids so that they can actually get the individualized instruction. Students seem to like to learn on a device. They spend a lot of their life in front of a screen. They seem to enjoy technology. And so that's been a good thing also. And the cloud-based computing, especially with the Chromebook, is a lot more secure for us. And also, we're trying to move the staff to the cloud also. So with the staff, we're, they're also in a Windows traditional environment and we're introducing them to the Chromebook and trying to provide them the benefit of also moving there so that they could more hand-in-hand provide the students there sort of thing, that they would be able to actually accommodate some of these possibilities above. And so we've been experimenting with some of the staff are farther along than others. And as we've been learning from the individual staff members of what we need to work on, we actually like added Amazon Web Services. So, and this also is for the, for the students. So if you are on a Chromebook and you need access to the Adobe products or CAD products or Microsoft Office Pro or Smart Notebook, something that's a Windows-only based thing, you can just on your Chromebook, open up a virtual Windows desktop, have access to a full Windows desktop, and then access it and do your homework that way right from your Chromebook. So, and all of these things have been possible because I do have a really amazing staff and I've gotten a great support from the district with the proper budget to make a lot of these initiatives happen and work really well. And yeah, it's been really a good thing. And that's all I've got. Very shortened.
Could be a long list, Brian.
It could be huge.
You know, one thing that we started this spring that I think is a highlight and Brian's been a big part of leading this is, you know, technology seems to be one of those things that you think about it in the back of your mind and then when something changes, it's, it feels like it just all of a sudden was sprung upon you, even though you've probably been hearing about it for the last three months. And so we started doing monthly task force meetings with principals and Brian leading that as well as myself and Brooke McGuire to talk through what's on the pike, what's coming down with technology. So we get ahead of it because one of the things we have to make sure we do is that we're all aligned in the technology changes that happen. So multi-factor authentication, for example, one of the things that went really well with that was if you're building administrator supportive, then it feels like, because there's a reason for this, it's why it's happening, I got it, as opposed to just this being done to us. So we're trying to avoid that as much as we can. And Brian does an excellent job of that, but also recognizing where sometimes things need to be aligned, right? And he mentioned software. There's so many apps, so many websites, so many things that teachers could pull off of the web to use that are all, all good things for the most part. But they all, you know, they have to meet our requirements, they have to be in compliance with the law. And so we have a system in place to make sure that we're doing that, which I think, again, is not the glamorous part of the technology world, but it keeps us where we need to be. So questions for Brian?
You say this is Google-based? This, the whole program is Google-based, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a Google platform. So the control of the Chromebooks is done by Google Admin Council. That's how I can control what applications that they can see and what they can actually do on the Chromebook.
Okay.
And so it also does, we also do Gmail and Google Drive for our file storage.
So, so when I open, when I open my Wasika app, I'm getting Google ads on there. Is this all part of, is this all part of it, or do I have a virus in my, in my, in my phone or what's going on there? Because I'm getting, I'm getting ads coming. When I open the Wasika app up, Wasika School app, I'm getting Google ads. And I just, you know, we just look at here on the list and hit her, her.
So when you open the app and you click on athletics, it brings you to the athletics page, which almost appears like it's a web browser page. And there's a lot of apps that are popping up on there. So I know that's not like a full technology thing, but that is an app.
So two things, the app is not connected to Google. Those are not, they're not the same system.
Right.
But then also, you're right, the athletics page is an external site. So we'll work on that.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that.
Those advertisements. Because it, he mentioned it to me and when I popped in there, I was like, there are, there are actually a lot of advertisements when you're using the app on that.
Sure. Very good.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's primarily because, my guess is because the athletic site has so many logos and different teams and different sponsors on there. So my guess is advertisers are going to pay the track.
Yeah.
It's external.
Is it Minnesota High School League?
No. No, this is, and we can work through that. We can look that up. Good deal.
Can you talk a little more about security? I would think that it's a constant battle. You know, you set up a wall and somebody gets around it. So you set up another wall and somebody gets around, I mean, it's a constant process, right?
Right. Well, the biggest thing was learning what mechanisms and what, what methods are they using to come in for the most part. And right now, from what I can tell from other schools, that people aren't really willing to share how they were attacked. It seems to be, if you ever go and read any of the articles, you know, even like American Express this week was attacked, which you'll never hear exactly, other than we know it was the third party. And you'll never get the details, but I've been doing really hard work and trying to find those details because they're extremely important that we all, especially as tech directors, know what those are. And so I'll actually talk to other tech directors that go to sessions and specifically ask those questions. But a lot of the avenue for incoming attacks right now has been through email, phishing email and attachments within email. And so then you'll have the spam. And then you have to make sure you've got the protection there within your email system and on your endpoint. So that's really, they don't just come in through brute force as much anymore through a firewall, but we do definitely take that aspect seriously also.
Do they want to come through like a backdoor type situation?
Well, they want to come through your email box.
Email box.
Yeah, and they want to target certain people. They want to target the people with the most access. It's really what they want to do. And then they'll put a malware piece on your computer and then start to expand amongst the network and try to traverse the network horizontally.
So do you know if somebody is trying to attack our system? I mean, is there something that tells you, hey, there was an attack at 2:00 in the morning last night and didn't get through, but somebody tried?
I've got multiple monitors, yes.
Okay.
Will it cover everything and will it cover every sort of attack? Maybe not, but I might be able to catch them if it's suspicious enough because I do look into every single one.
Okay. Interesting.
If you get an email from me asking for your information and the payroll information, it's probably not legit. My email is a, is a big target. It will appear to come from me to staff asking for sensitive information, but staff is trained and they know what they're supposed to do and they recognize those things.
You don't need bail money?
Not yet.
With things moving more cloud-based, is there still infrastructure you have here? Server storage? Or I assume that's getting less and less and less, but is there still some here you have to support?
There's still a lot of server storage here, yes. Yes. And the goal is to move everything to the cloud eventually. We're not a speedious, expeditious-moving organization, so it's going to take us some time and people have to get comfortable with moving that direction. But yes, that is definitely the goal. And we're having meetings to try to get all on board with that and set some directions and clarity for all staff.
And I suppose until all the staff shift off the Windows model and move to the Chromebook, it's, they kind of tie together.
Correct. Yep. I've got that anchor. We'll work through it.
It's a lot of mindset, too. I mean, I think our district office is sometimes one of the most hesitant because we have the most sensitive information. And so for that not to be sitting in a server in my closet, it makes me very nervous still, quite frankly. It just does. And so we're working through that and Brian is coaching me along through the security things that we have and we're getting there.
And I know at work, we always get told, well, if you think, open on your phone first, not your computer.
Which is not safe either.
No.
I was just going to say, Brian's probably one of our longest-serving employee administrators. How many years have you been?
Yeah, I started with IT here 31 years ago.
31 years.
Yep.
And you're only 35 years old.
Oh, my God.
You started when you were four. Well, thank you for all those years.
Thanks.
And your service all that time.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on with the, with the agenda here tonight. We're going to flip-flop two and three, just since we have Mr. Brendan here to share with us some things about MRAA and how MRAA serves our district. Between he and I, we'll kind of give you a little update of why MRAA is different than some other organizations that we work with. And then a little bit from that perspective of what's going on with the legislature, but not a lot to update compared to when we've talked last, but just, MRAA is a unique organization in the sense that it serves teachers, school boards, administrators, all staff combined. So when you think about MSBA or MASA or Education Minnesota, they all have their, their particular service groups that they, that they serve. So therefore, the perspective sometimes can be combative, adversarial even at times. But MRAA does a very unique job of supporting all of these roles in the, on the same team. And then the rural aspect to boot with that suit. So Craig, I'll let you kind of share and.
Oh, all right. Well, thanks for having me here. I just want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity. What is MRAA? Minnesota Rural Education Association. Got to start, if you look, look at this first one about MRAA, you can peruse that and we'll talk a little bit about that. But MRAA got to start in west central Minnesota, 30, over 35 years ago, because we weren't getting, rural Minnesota wasn't getting served by the legislature. And they decided that we needed to have a voice in St. Paul that was going to be tied directly into what's going on legislatively so we can get the things that, some of the things that we need out here. 237 school districts, over 250,000 students and over 30,000 educators are served by MRAA. Many different aspects of what we have going on. And this first one, it gives a schedule of our last conference this last November, shows you the different things that are going on in when we have our fall conference, all the different activities there. And this is open, the conference is open to everybody that is a member. School board members, there's community members that are, that are part of MRAA, there are administrators and teachers. It's the only group that encompasses all those entities, which makes it really unique. So when we go to our board meetings, we all have an equal voice in what's going on. Nobody sits, nobody sits any higher than anybody else. We all have equal input. One of the really neat things about what MRAA does, I believe, is we have educators of excellence every year from the four different zones, from north to south. We've had Anthony Hopkins, who is currently our TOSA here in Wasika, was an educator of excellence. Howard Van Otterloo from Janesville, two years ago, was our educator of excellence from the southern zone. And this past year, Jenny Morris from Morris was our educator of excellence. And she went on to the Nationals and she was, she is now the national educator of excellence for all rural education entities in the entire country, which is a really big feather in our cap. We believe that MRAA does a really good job of recognizing those people who are outstanding in their fields. And I believe that the person that we have coming up this next year is another highly qualified candidate that has very good potential of becoming National Educator of the Year again. I got started with MRAA about three years ago, I was elected to the board. I've known about MRAA for quite a while. But the big thing is its advocacy. And that's what drew me to it, to be on the board. We are concerned about what's happening with rural education. You know, if you look at what happened last year legislatively, there are a lot of things, a lot of monies went out, a lot of things went out, there are a lot of mandates. We know that. And we're looking at how did that affect us? You know, how that affect MRAA, the rural school districts out here. And we have one of the best, I think, lobbyists in the state in Sam Walsa. He, we developed a platform, and if you look at the how MRAA serves you on the second page, our 23, 2023 legislative accomplishments that were things that we partnered with MSBA, all the different entities to get things moved through that benefited rural education. You know, you can, and I'm not, you know, you can read it, you can, you can see it. A lot of funding things and how do, how do things better for us? At the same time, the things that MRAA pushes through, it benefits every district in the state, not just rural Minnesota. You know, it reaches farther than that. But Sam does a great job of talking to legislators and legislators and getting them to understand what the issues are out here. Because as you know, we look in that metro ring and it kind of stays in that area. And the second, the third page of that handout there talks about this year's legislative platform, the things that we're working on, looking at and hoping to get pushed into statute and perhaps change a few things that happened last year that we realized that maybe didn't affect us the way we needed to have affected. Biggest one is the policy flexibility at the very bottom, not mandates. Allow us to be flexible out here. Local controls, one of the things we talk about a lot when we meet. It's important. I think, I think it's important to us. But it's been an honor to be on the board the past two years and I got elected again this, this, this last winter. And I'm excited about the things that we're going to be doing going forward. So if you have any questions.
I just was going to say that, you know, we, and we are, we've been members now for a long time here in Wasika and it's a, it's a minimal investment each year, much, very much worth the investment, about $2,500 a year is the annual dues, when you include the dues and, and the lobbying opportunity that each district is charged. So very, very minimal investment for a lot of good work that happens for us. We get engaged in that. So I'm, I'm part of weekly, weekly calls with MRAA to hear about what's happening at the Capitol, hear what's going on for that. Craig's engaged in board meetings. So as well as all the work they're doing, I think they're hiring a new director coming up.
Next Friday.
Friday as the interview. So we have to have voice at the table at that from Wasika, but also from southern Minnesota. So we get engaged, we get active, and we're, and we're represented well. So we wanted you to just kind of know that, you know, we're using our supports that we have for us here in Wasika. One of the most important things for us is that we take all the things that our service organizations, our state associations, MRAA, MSBA, MASA, and we're looking at what, what is, how does that fit for Wasika? We're getting our voice at the table because we may not feel like everything on this particular platform or on MSBA's platform or anyone for that matter, is the priority for Wasika. So the only way we can get ourselves to make sure we, we keep moving forward is getting a voice at the table. And so I thank you, Craig, for your service with MRAA, also talking with us. I'm doing that. I know board members always have the opportunity to do that when you're, when you're able. But yeah, we can stand for questions, but this is an important one because it encompass, one of the most collaborative groups.
Very collaborative.
You know, Craig and I get along really well, but sometimes we have different perspectives on things. But for MRAA, it's a very, it's a very aligned, very aligned process.
We spent a lot of time developing the platform that, you know, that we're looking at for this coming year. And we don't take it lightly. And that happens at our fall, it happens at our fall meeting after our conferences, when that happens, we get together and meet. I would implore you to join on in the mreavoice.org. Go there. You can catch the same, about, just about every Tuesday morning at 7:00, it's live. And Sam gives a legislative update during the legislative session. So he gives what's happening at the Capitol. We don't always hear what's happening at the Capitol. And he's got his ear right in there and he knows what's going on. And he'll tell you exactly what he knows, what happened. So next Tuesday, comes out at 7:00, get to hear what he knows. After that, that's recorded and you can, you can view it later. Once you sign up for it, you can view it later at your leisure. But also after the morning they quit recording it, then you can ask questions too. You can ask Sam and Bob, our, in our current executive director, questions about what's, you know, what, what do you think? You know, what do you think may be happening? How that works? And if you ever have a question that you would like to bring to MRAA, email me. And I am more than happy to bring that up when we come, when we come to our next meeting, when we have our next SORI, I think it'll be a Zoom meeting again.
How often do you actually go to like a board of directors meeting?
We have two in-person meetings a year.
Okay.
The one is in the summertime and this last one was up at Morton. We were at the, on the reservation, we got to look at their facility that they just finished and created. And that's our winter, winter board meeting. So we have, they used to have four, but now they have two because the pandemic pushed us all that way. And we found out we're being more efficient that way by doing it with a Zoom meeting. So we have two other meetings, one in the fall and another one in the spring here coming up. Also encourage you to think about coming to our, get some representation at our fall conference. There are some great things there. Don't have to, you know, one or two of you that can be interested in going. I've been trying to get some administrators there, twisting their arms a little bit. Doesn't always work. But board members or, you know, we're all welcome because we're all members, we're part of the, part of the group. And you can see all the different things that are going on.
That's great.
Thank you, Craig.
All right. Thank you. And our last item for this evening is I just wanted to give the board some updates on some city development, things that are coming up and also how that impacts or doesn't impact the district and what our role in this is. And so I was approached about two weeks ago, I had a conversation with our, our city manager as well as the county administrator, talking through some work the council is doing. So we're looking at doing some development at an apartment complex in the vacant lot that's in between our high school and Walmart. It's a city-owned lot there. And we're looking at doing some development of an apartment unit on that, on that lot. And so the question would be, how does that impact us and what's the role in that? So why that, why that's important to us is because the city has applied for what's called a TIF district, which is tax incremental financing, to be able to get that done. So the developer who was looking at developing that property is basically going to leverage, take, they're going, they would, the city would go for a bond and they would end up essentially give money to the developer as needed, as they're developing the property. And then they would collect that over the course of maximum, right now, the application says 15 years as a tax incremental financing process to be able to pay that back, what that would be. So the city has felt that that's necessary to get that developer in there to develop that. It's an apartment complex, about 36-ish units is what they're hoping to put in there. It would be on the west end of the property. So it would be, you know, across the road there from our intermediate school and our high school. With that, so when the design comes out, we'll see where the egress ingress is. But I've been assured it's not, not going towards whis. They won't be going out of the building towards there. And so as part of the process, they do have to hold a public hearing. And in the application process, the public hearing is April 2nd. And as they announce that, then they give that to, to us as, as a school district. And then we have the opportunity to provide comments and/or feedback on the plan. And we can, we need to give that to them before April 2nd with that opportunity. And so we would be, ask questions, whatever it might be. Tomorrow morning, I will email you the full application so you can review it. It's about 20 pages, not overly complicated, but without, without context, I figured I would talk about it tonight first and then share the document with you. There's not really anything to display that's not really small right now. But it doesn't impact us financially. Okay? So tax incremental financing, that would essentially. financially, okay? So tax incremental financing, that would essentially not add the full value of the property to the tax base for those years until that's paid off. So if this were to be a privately owned lot that we currently were collecting taxes on, that would reduce our tax revenue for the, for the time, okay, that, that TIF was in place. However, this is a city-owned lot right now, which means it's not being taxed anyway. So it's a basically a net zero revenue for us as a school district. We're not going to see any less in our, in our, in our revenue sources, because it's just, we're not going to get taxes that weren't there in the first place. Then after it's developed, then we'll obviously get the benefit of that taxable revenue. The total value, I believe, is about eight and a half million dollars, what they're expecting the, the total property to be when complete, which then that revenue would, the school portion would be what it is. So it's a number of years down the road. It would be a bigger deal right now, like I said, if this was a private lot, because then we would essentially be reducing some of our tax base, right? It also would be a bigger deal if the, if the TIF district and the, the bond was going to be for a large amount. Say it was going to be for 40 or 50 million dollars, then that might increase our estimated market value enough of the community that it impacts our state aid through our levy process. But for this small of a value, we're just, Matt Mullin and I were on the phone with Ellers the last few days, just to make sure we had the information. And this, this level of, of TIF is not going to increase our, our levy or, or impact our levy. Really is kind of a, it's just gonna be there. So it's just an update. We don't have necessarily the authority to stop or deny an application for this. It's more of a, an FYI, here it's coming. And then if there's any concerns that we have significantly about the project, we have the opportunity to voice them. And then when the, when the state reviews this, you know, this application, they would have those things to consider for us. So I see it as a, as an opportunity to increase our housing in the community. You know, it's, we don't really get to pick the location on this one, because it's city-owned land that they're, you know, working through it. For that number of units, is it going to impact, impact our district a lot? Probably not. They're looking at potentially shovel-ready here this summer, which means the significant part where the, the road might be, parking might not be accessible, happens during our summer months, which is a good thing for us, be able to do that. And so at this point, I mean, I'd answer any questions you may have, from what I know. Otherwise, what I would, would, wanted to do is introduce it to you all, share the application with you here tomorrow morning. And then at our next board meeting on the 21st, I would, I would like to put this as a discussion item, but then also as a action item. If there's any comments you'd like me to formally submit, because I don't, as a district, we'll submit as one, on our behalf. And so, and I will do that on our behalf. But I, as I was thinking about this more, I thought about it in formal conversation, and then me writing it up, and I thought, you know, we're probably better off to have a, an aligned conversation about it, and then submit those comments together as a, as a board. So I'll answer the questions I have, that, from what I know as of now. Otherwise, I'll send it to you, and we can, we can convene that discussion a little more in our next board meeting. What questions do you have right away?
Is that street that goes east and west on the north side public? And from what point to what point?
It's, that's, it's entirely public.
All the way to the stop sign?
Correct.
And then it's ours? Or does it go into?
The parking lot is ours going north through west, that's public also.
Okay.
The street is.
So the street is public when it takes a right?
Correct.
Everything else is ours?
Correct.
Okay. And do you, that's, then that all the entrance and all that falls onto the city?
Mm-hmm. Right. Right.
I have two questions. You said that city will go for bond? Is it against, or not against, against, is it from, for the waters from Wasika, or it will go?
I don't know. It's, no, it's not, it's not a voter-approved bond. No, it's an application process for that.
And then just, you know, when they have a plan, like, you know, the road is public, you know, they're facing the west, there is a possibility if they put entrance there and properly, and parking, that it will affect the, you know, our morning and afternoon schedule when you have all the people going with the cars?
Right, yeah. They've said that the ingress, egress is planned to come out on 19th, which is the road past the high school, the east-west road there. So not kicking out into the west parking lot. That's not the plan. The plan would be to come out to the south, is what I'm hearing so far. I've not seen any design yet. But, because I was encouraging them to go, oh, the direction, to go to the east.
How many units is it, is it, do you know?
Around 36, what it says in here. And it says around 36.
So we would want to make sure if we have any concerns still about our traffic, that we work with the city on addressing that with all that work being there?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And really, what it, what it comes down to, what our, what our play here is to narrate that into a concern and make sure that I can share it in writing to the, to the city.
Or while they're doing all of this, they could address the traffic in general.
Well, exactly. Do it one shot, not twice.
Yep.
Yeah.
Which then you also, I mean, it, like, all, all kind of together, because it's Highway 13. So then you get, how do you get at, and with the state highway?
Yeah.
Maybe invite somebody from the city to our facilities conversations?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, we'll get to that conversation. And keep, and we have to remember, this is in the application.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Well, it's exciting to see growth.
Yes.
It really is.
100% support that, yeah.
And it does, you're exactly right. It does, it does impact our, our plans going forward. Because then we're already, we might see some things addressed sooner than later, or we might see some things that we have to work around.
As part of this discussion, has anything ever been mentioned about if they do this and it's deemed a success, that maybe in the future, they would do the same thing on the east half of that property?
I, not that I've, the conversations that I've been part of, which have been relatively informal, as an invitation to come to the table to give this, they're hoping to, so currently that, currently that plot of land sits in three parcels. And they've redistributed that, so it's two parcels. And they're hoping to keep the east-facing one for something more.
Retail or?
Yeah.
Okay, commercial.
Retail or, I don't know, hotel came up as a word, but something like that, you know, with that. So it would just be the apartment unit, and then something that would fit the marketplace theme of that area up there. We currently, Wasika has had TIF districts in the past. We currently do not have any, because they, everything that had been in the place, right, previously is now currently paid off. So we don't currently have any TIF districts in our, in our community right now.
This is, it's a common means for cities to encourage development, yeah.
Very. Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I think, like you said, the growth is really exciting as a potential. It's a similar conversation we've had over the last year around that particular area about just getting it out of it. But that's something that would be exciting to see that work coming to fruition, to have to address some of that, and that could potentially support our work, too, to look at that property.
Now, is this considered, I guess they call it market rate rental?
So, yeah, so it's, it's, some of it's market rate, some of it's low to medium income, but not all. It's distributed.
It's kind of a combination. Okay.
Yeah. And it, it doesn't specify in here the, this, the, the details of that, other than it's a, there is some market rate housing in there. There is some medium to low-income housing, it says in there. So.
And do you know, are these, they're apartments, or they're, are they all the same size? Don't know.
Yeah. That's a design question that.
Okay.
Is not here yet, that I've been part of. Yeah. So I appreciate them bringing it to us and giving us the opportunity to give our feedback. And as you think of things before the 21st board meeting, please send me an email or shoot me a text or something so that I can kind of, what would be helpful is at the 21st board meeting, if I'm able to, I'll remind you in the update next week. Be helpful if I could say, here's some of the comments I've gotten, here's kind of where we are, anything to add, and then we can kind of summarize our thoughts into something that I can formally submit on our behalf. Very good.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
Nothing else this evening.
Okay. Anyway, anybody else have anything else tonight? All right, I guess we're done.
Okay.
Thank you.